Welcome, I'm Natasha Spata, Chair of the Needham Planning Board and I call the November 6, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to Order. The meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham channel, and it is being recorded for publication, later viewing, and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. And I'll call the rule for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert, Adam Block, Artie Crocker, and Justin McCollin is absent today.
Our staff, Lee Newman and Alex Kleeh, are here with us today. So today we have seven items on the agenda. The first one is a decision for the continuation of major project site plan special permit, number 2024-01, Needham Housing Authority for the property located at Zero Linden Street and Five Chamber Street. The second item is a review of the Planning Board goals. The third item is to vote on large house review committee appointments. The fourth is meeting minutes from September, I believe, 17th. The fifth is the Planning Board appointment to treat preservation and planning committee. Six is report from Planning Board and Board members, and then seven is correspondence. So with that, there's the decision of the continuation of major project site plan permit for the Needham Housing Authority. So I think Attorney Smart is here. Would you like to come up?
Sure.
And we received correspondence for this, a letter to the Planning Board on Tuesday, November 5th, from Ross Donald. And we also have received from you the document with the changes, as well as your letter from, email from November 6th.
Do you want me to speak? Do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're asking that Section 3.1.2 be deleted from the decision. The, you know, with, you know, with, it's, first of all, the zoning, the zoning article itself says nothing about affordability other than less than or equal to 80% of area median income. The, the presentations on the town, on the town meeting floor by the Planning Board and by the Select Board said nothing about any restriction other than the 80% of AMI, which is what the town has been using for years, not, you know, in various, in various parts of town for affordable housing. My, my memory is that no one on the town meeting floor in, in the course of the discussion said anything about an income level restriction other than 80% of area median income. I heard, I heard.
I would make a distinction.
Go ahead.
The Planning Board didn't, but separately, the Select Board, in their comments, referenced it, not as relation to the zoning, but in relation to its own agreement with the developer in the town that's outside of our purview.
Right. I, I guess my, my, my response to that is, I, I called Kathy Dowd, who gave the presentation for the Select, the Select Board, caught her just as she was coming off the train, and she, she, she sent me, you know, the, the printed text of her remarks on all four articles that related to the Needham Housing Authority project. And there's not a word in that, in any of that, about anything other than the 80% of area median income.
Right. I think it was in the FAQ that was put up, because I, Chris is here, and he can speak to us. Hey, Bob, I don't know if you saw, he gave you the send.
Yes, I, yes, I did.
You should see that, okay.
I did. We just, we think it, we think it will be, it will be easier, quite frankly, to, to get through the, the, the financing piece of, of all of this in good shape if we don't have any additional, any additional language that might be of concern to the financing members. And I believe that, that the town is adequately protected because the CPC made, made quite clear that, you know, before they're going to, they're going to actually issue that $5.5 million in authorized funds, they're going to, they're going to want an affordability, affordable affordability housing restriction recorded at the registry. And, and then I, you know, I, I went on in my, in my letter to indicate that, that we would, would not want any, any restriction to prevent, prevent the issuance of a building permit prior, you know, would, would require recording prior to the issuance, issuance of a building permit, because it, it, you know, having the building permit in hand is, is something that's, is important to the funders. So that would be, that would be problematic. So I, and I, I think that, I, I don't think that the town, that the Planning Board needs to be putting in its decision enforcement of conditions which were not part of the Planning Board process at all, and in fact are part of the process of an entirely different board in the town. So those are my thoughts.
So my understanding is that you're saying that the Planning Board should not be responsible for enforcing the affordable housing restriction that the, which the Community Preservation Committee has called for, so the Community Preservation Committee already has that restriction?
Well, it's not.
As part of their funding.
Yes, it's not, it's not recorded, but it's, it's part of their funding, and they have, they have, actually, quite frankly, holding, holding, being able to hold back $5.5 million is, is, is the town being in a lot more, more substantial position than the town being asked to take legal action to enforce a, a recorded restriction.
So having that recorded restriction will restrict you from the additional funding that you would need for the project.
That's the concern.
Okay.
I think Chris is here to, to speak to this, I, because Chris and I had actually worked on this condition, because this was a representation that was made to town meeting, it was actually in an FAQ, so the language is in your decision basically comes from the FAQ that was presented to town meeting in terms of what the intent was, and we felt it was important to have something in here that kind of reflects what the overall affordability intent is. Whether or not that restriction is done, I think, at that building permit stage or not, could be certainly modified here, but I think Chris could talk better than I, because he knows more about financing and how all this works than I do.
Okay. I was wondering where he is.
Hello, Plenary Board members, hello, hello, Lee, and hello, Bob. So a couple of, a couple of thoughts on the condition.
Hold on a second. Chris, one second. Excuse me, I'm sorry, it's really difficult for us to hear. Thank you very much, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Can everybody hear me okay?
It's a little faint.
It's a little faint, maybe if we could.
That's not you, Chris.
Yeah, I don't know how to help that.
Can we hit the plus on this? Would that help?
No, no.
No, no, don't touch it. Okay.
How's that?
It's, it's still faint. Let's see if they can raise it for one second. Adam is troubleshooting.
Alex, Alex.
Yes?
I'm having the, the Needham wireless network is down. I've had it down like here on my phone. Is it down for you?
No.
It was down for me, I couldn't get around to either phone or the, or the computer.
Yeah, I know, Paul is having the same problem. I don't know what that's about. It works for me.
I don't have my computer here today, Ben.
I don't think.
I'm on it.
Okay, well.
It's working.
It is what it is.
I can speak up. Is this gonna, is this gonna work?
Sure, we just need to make sure that everyone is quiet in the room. Okay.
Okay, so a couple of thoughts on the condition. It, we, and I, by we, I mean, I think, everybody who worked on the series of articles that were presented to town meeting in the spring, included in the informational materials, the, the piece of information that said there was going to be an affordable housing restriction recorded against the property, and that that affordable housing restriction was going to memorialize that the project was going to be rented, units in the project were going to be rented mostly to tenants at deeply affordable levels, provided that some smaller number of units would be available to rent for tenants at 80% of AMI, such that when you add all of those units up together, the overall average of the project was going to be 60% of AMI as, for the project as a whole. The FAQ that we published did specifically say that that affordable housing restriction was going to be arranged for, by the CPC, Town Council, and the Town Manager, and ultimately that would be signed by the Select Board. So Bob is correct that this was framed as an obligation, or rather, an exercise that was going to be carried out by the Community Preservation Committee as part of the grant funding for the project. Nonetheless, when we were working on the draft decision, Lee did raise the question about whether there should be a condition included to note that this is an obligation associated with this project. And when we talked about it, it did seem to both of us, I think, that that would be a good idea for a couple of reasons. One, it is, I believe, true, although Bob should correct me if, if, if he thinks I'm misspeaking, that this project is absolutely intended to be rented primarily to tenants at deeply affordable income levels with some small number of units rented to tenants at 80% of AMI, such that the overall average for the project will come out to 60% of AMI. That is my understanding about what the project is going to be, and there will need to be an affordable housing restriction put again, put up, put on the property at some point, memorializing that. With all that being true, you know, I think it makes good sense, to my mind, to note that in the Planning Board's decision, because otherwise, the Planning Board decision is simply speaking to this as a purely 80% of AMI project, which might be consistent with the way we wrote the zoning, but, you know, that, 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 if it's left to just say that these units can all be rented up to 80% of AMI, you know, that's, that is not consistent with my understanding of the, of the, of what I'm proposing here. So with that being true, I think it makes good sense to call that out somehow in the permit, and I should make clear that I'm not wedded to the precise language that Lee and I included in the draft, but, you know, I worry that if that is not stated somehow in the decision, that there may be people who come into the, you know, who are looking at this project later on down the road, who could claim that they were unaware that that is what we're, we're permitting and what NHA is going to build and what NHA is going to go operate. In addition to that, you know, I, I, I'm, I am always sensitive to the concern that a condition we impose in a decision is going to complicate financing, but here, you know, I did take some care in the drafting of the condition to, you know, try to limit it to the four corners of what I think is agreed to for this project. So I worry that if stating that that is the obligation of the, of NHA, and the permit is going to complicate financing, I guess I'm, I'm, I, I worry that we're not being sufficiently clear in the permit about what, you know, what's going to get built and what's going to get operated on, already going forward.
Two, two responses to what, to what Chris said. One, one is that the lang, the, you know, the, the language in the FAQ, you know, that the, I guess the CPC and some other people were looking for is very specific, and it may, it may not harmonize word for word with what, what the various other funding agencies and their lawyers are looking for, because the, the idea here, and the, the idea here is that, you know, the town, CPC, the various funding entities are all going to be getting together at some point in the future when they're working through the funding, and the 5.5 million from the town is a piece of that funding, they're all going to be, you know, putting their, putting their, their language kind of on the table. This is the, this is what we want to see in a, sort of a comprehensive affordability housing restriction, which is going to be recorded. And I'm concerned that, that the Housing Authority is going to get locked into precise language, which was never part of its application, by the way, to the, to the Planning Board, that, that is problematic for some of the other funders, and which could put us in a situation where, you know, where time actually matters, having to come back to the Planning Board and ask that this decision, that this, that this provision be amended. Because that process takes some time, there'd be, there'd be a question about whether it's a, whether it's a de minimis change, or if it's something that would require notice in a public hearing. Sorry, if it's, if it's the latter, you know, you could be talking, could be talking a couple of months before you get, before you get it done. So those are my concerns. So that was my first, my first response. The second is, I, I'd ask that, that, that you recognize Betsy Collins, who is the Vice President of Development, PBD Properties, and knows a whole lot more about all of this than I do.
Thank you. As Bob said, I'm Betsy Collins, and I'm the Vice President of Development with PBD Properties. PBD was selected as the co-developer under RFP by the Housing Authority, so we'll be working with, with the Housing Authority and my colleague from Affordable Housing and Services Collaborative on the project. The language and the, all of the AMI restrictions will be part of probably at least 10 other programs that will finance this project, and they all will have their own affordable housing restrictions, some of which will be 30% of AMI and all these other layers of requirements. They will propose to adopt the Mass stocks financing package, which is a standardized financing package. They'll ask the CPC if they would like to have their grant documented in as part of a master subordinated, a master affordable housing restriction. So there will be, there will be an overall comprehensive affordable housing restriction that will be put together. It will list everybody's resource, everybody's requirements, and then at the end of the day, they'll come up with the least common denominator. So if there is one funding source that wants half of the units to be at 30% of AMI, the project will have to abide by that regardless of some of the other restrictions. So the lowest common denominator will be in that document, as well as each program, so they list them all. The way the process works is, we'll have a tax credit investor, we'll have all these other funding sources, and everybody will do their due diligence, make sure that they are committing their resources, and we will be working toward the financing closing. At the time we go to financing closing, everybody will put all their documents together, typically send them to an escrow at a title company, and authorize the release for recording, and in that packet will be that master affordable housing restriction. But one of the things that everybody's going to want to know before they say, yeah, we're going to commit our funds, or, you know, once we close, our funds are committed and we will be, allow you to build the project and advance the funds, they're going to want to know we have a building permit. So if a condition to the decision says that a building permit will be withheld without an affordable housing restriction being recorded, you're putting a key piece that everybody's going to want to have agreed upon, that yes, this project has satisfied the requirements, and the building commissioner is willing to issue the building permit, and then they will say, good, that's checked off, we know we have a project that can be built, and we're going to authorize the, the title company to go to record and commit our resources. The CPC will be part of that. So part of the problem here is that your ability to withhold the building permit means we'll never get to a closing without restructuring that. So I think one of the thoughts was that it can be documented as, you know, there will be an affordable housing restriction, the CPC will be part of that negotiation and part of the drafting, but if the, the condition that is still sitting in, in our written decision here would say something to the effect that the certificate of occupancy can't be issued until, until an affordable housing is restricted, restriction is filed, and since that's done up at the front, and all the lenders are going to say, oh, you can't get a CVO unless we record this, it's going to be recorded, you just don't have the sequence, kind of putting one piece that's necessary to go to recording ahead of things.
And if I could, if I could just insert a comment there, I, I think we, maybe we can take this, that particular issue off the table. I, and Lee and I included building permit as the milestone in our draft condition, 312, but I, I'm more than happy to have some other milestone be selected here, although I guess I would have thought that the alternative we would all agree to would be prior to issue with some of the certificate of occupancy. So if that's problematic, I, I'd be, we would certainly want all these documents on record before we allow occupancy of a constructed building, I think. What, so is a CO not an acceptable alternative, or is, would that, would that work?
A CO is the last thing, but substantial completion is before the CVO.
But your building inspector would be the one holding the ability to issue the CVO. Our substantial completion typically will come from the architect, not necessarily something that's a municipal body, you know, or municipal.
Right, but that would happen before, you need that before you get a CVO, so I'm just saying, it gives a little more time than just the CVO, which is at the last minute.
Yep, yep.
On the, on the other hand, you can't occupy the building without the certificate of occupancy, so.
But it gives more time to be able to resolve things. I'm just.
Well, but we're, what's being represented here is that the issue will be resolved when the funding occurs.
At the beginning, right.
Which, which is going to be, it sounds like after the building permit is issued, but before they can put a shovel in the ground. They have to have the funding to be able to put the shovel in the ground. May I ask, may I ask Chris a question?
Sure, and then Adam.
Because my problem is that we don't have the CPC's documents in front of us, and I'm hearing Chris say that he worked on those documents with CPC and the board or Select, the Select Board or the Town Manager. So my question is, is it in the CPC documents that the funding from CPC requires that there be deeply affordable housing?
So, no. Well, I guess I, I don't know what specifics, I think the answer is that the CPC documents you are referring to, Paul, don't actually exist yet. The operative document was going to be, that was going to memorialize all of this, was going to be a grant agreement, which the CPC typically issues before it disperses money appropriated by town meeting, and the grant agreement is going to require that the affordable housing restriction be completed and recorded against the property. So those documents were not prepared in advance of town meeting, it was simply, as I recall it, the understanding of the CPC, working on the town meeting warrant articles, and I believe NHA, that all of those were going to come later on down the road. Was, I think, informally understood and, sort of informally, but nonetheless universally agreed to, that these documents were going to be put on record, but the documents themselves don't, don't actually exist yet, in part because.
The representation that I think I saw in Bob's letter, that if there isn't the appropriate to the satisfaction of CPC, deeply affordable housing restriction, CPC can withhold the town's money, but I'm now hearing that if the CPC tried to do that, if I were a lawyer for the other, for the, for the funders, I would say, you can't do that, that's not a part of what you were authorized to do at town meeting. Town meeting authorized you to spend the money.
Well, I guess, I guess I, I may, I may frame that slightly differently, but I do take your point, Paul, and I guess I'd, I'd frame it as follows. You know, at various stages in this process, we, we, and by we, I mean lots of different people and boards in town, faced the question, well, faced the question, when and where do we memorialize the affordability, the specific affordability requirements of this project? And by that, I mean, most deeply affordable, some 80% of AMI, working out to an average of approximately 60% of AMI. We made the calculation that that did not need to be included in the zoning itself that we took to town meeting, and that it could instead be captured at some point later on down the road. We, nonetheless, that was the understanding of what the project was going to, to, to be. You know, as we continue to move further along down the process, I think the question becomes, you know, when should we make that explicit if it doesn't appear in an existing grant agreement or an existing affordability restriction? This permit strikes me as a good opportunity to make that obligation explicit. And again, I don't know, it would be possible to frame that in the decision, not as with the Plenary Board necessarily as the enforcing authority here, but merely note in the condition that this is something the CPC is going to expect, and the applicant is going to provide, you know, when the time comes to enter into that grant agreement and start dispersing the CPC funding that was, that was awarded. I guess I just, I don't think there's any disagreement that.
Right. I'm just going to ask that you get back to me after Adam and, and Artie speaks.
I guess I just want to, I guess I just want to try to make, I guess, I think it would be helpful to make explicit, this project that you are reviewing, as I am, as I know it from the work that I've done on it previously, is not really an 80% AMI project. Do we all agree about that?
I would say it's.
It is, it is, but it, but it's not even really up to 80. If we're describing it fairly, it's not a project where income limits are limited to a maximum of 80% of AMI. As a practical matter, it is a much more deeply affordable project, and there may be some other way of articulating that than the one Lee and I chose in the draft decision, but I think it, just for the sake of clarity about what's being permitted and what will ultimately get built, I think it's worthwhile to somehow make that explicit in the permit itself, lest anybody pick it up and read it a year from now and think that this is, you know, all of the units in this project are intended to be, you know, up to a maximum of 80% of AMI, because I don't think that's what we're, what we're talking about.
So Adam had some, you've been patient.
So, thank you. I, I have a few questions. I want to start at the beginning and get clear, and get clarity on something. Are you saying that overall that Needham Housing Authority would accept a deed restriction by the municipality?
Yes.
Okay, so now the question is, what form would it take, and at what time? And the time would be the milestone. The form of it, I think, Chris, if I can ask you, let me ask you a question. If the deed restriction is conveyed in the grant agreement, isn't that sufficient form? And for context, for context, all of their other funding sources are going to require exactly the same thing, and that funding is not accessible to them unless they guarantee those certain levels identified then of affordability, and they're not necessarily going to know those, we're like chicken and an egg right now.
So to your, to that, to that point, Adam, I can personally speak to the affordability levels required by NHA's other financing sources, and I can't speak to what.
Sure.
Type or level of affordability restriction those other funding sources are going to require. I can only speak to NHA's representations to the town. NHA's representations to the town. And so and those are, to be fair, I think the only representations that I would ever seek to try to capture in a permit issued by the town. But it is true that the representation of NHA consistently was deeply affordable. Some eighty percent of AMI and average out to about sixty percent. So I so I can't. I can't. I can't. Provide any. Comfort that the other funding sources left to their own devices will somehow capture that.
I'm not asking you to. I'm not asking you to comment on those other funding sources. I we just know that those other funding forces will also have funding source will also have. A similar requirement, and they may be the ones that actually kind of resolve how much. You know, what the lowest common denominator, as Betsy had said, would actually be. And I think it's. A little challenging for us to impose a condition with any specificity specificity. A little tired today, as I'm sure most of us are. It's that's what I'm saying. It's a bit of a chicken and an egg, but yet we still want to accomplish the same goal. So. You'll know what your lowest common denominator is. As a result of the various funding rounds that you're going to go through. But are you guys applying on the December fifth winter round?
Applying in the November twenty fifth pre-app.
Pre-app.
Yes, and then the full app in February.
Okay, so. So. You'll know. So you'll know in twenty in the. In the late spring or summer of two thousand and twenty five, what the potential funding. Requirements will be in terms of affordability. So. And the last piece would be the municipalities piece. And so at that milestone, logistically, we would know what it would be. And I think the grant agreement, which holds the property accountable. To always preserving a certain level of affordability achieves the municipal goal. Without in without locking down. A deed restriction. Without knowing what the specifics of that deed restriction possibly could be. And that care and that carries with with the project of another someone else, if Needham Housing Authority. Were ever to be in a situation, however unlikely, to sell the property. And whether it's a private owner or another entity, whatever succeeding entity, they would still be bound by that financing.
Just to respond quickly, Adam, we do know. The only thing that is. I would characterize as owed to the town. That is, the affordability levels that will be secured by a deed restriction provided to the town of Needham. Those are. Those are. Those are clear. Those appear in your draft permit as I frame them.
If I could say something further. We've got. We've got, you know, several lawyers that are involved with this right now, and I think we all probably have had some experience with. Office to purchase and then subsequent purchase and sale agreements and. The language in the offer to purchase is not always carried word for word. Into the final purchase and sale agreement. That's when you actually negotiate the details. I see. I I see that as a pretty good analogy to what we're talking about here in terms of language. You've got. You've got a frequently asked questions document that was cobbled together by multiple people kind of on the fly before town meeting.
I'll take it, but but I will.
If I could just look, just hear me out, Chris. But what was what was contemplated by that was that there was going to be a. Specific grant agreement that was going to be negotiated and the precise language. Generated, and that hasn't happened yet. We still don't have that language. So I'm concerned about having a language in a planning board decision, which is precise. And based on frequently asked question. Language that might not even be what's in the might not even be what's in the grant agreement when it's ultimately created. So I, to me, that's that's problematic.
So I guess, if I could just respond quickly, the FAQ that that I went back and. Dug up was not cobbled together before town meeting. The affordability. Levels for this project were the subject of lengthy and detailed discussion between the town and NHA. And the FAQ was prepared with some care given to how we were framing the affordability levels. And I believe it was shared with NHA for them to review and confirm that it was accurate before it was published to the town meeting website. So I guess I just I it it. Is an FAQ and has less than the sort of full weight of a permitting condition, but. It was put together with some care. So I guess the other thing is is that. There, I said at the outset, and I think I want to emphasize this now. I'm not tied to the exact text of the draft condition that Lee and I included in the in the in the permit. If NHA and Bob want to work to revise it, I think that would be perfectly appropriate. I'd be more than happy to agree to it. But I do think it is. Not entirely. It is not an accurate. Description of the project to say simply that this is going to be. Rented to tenants up to eighty percent of AMI, period, and leave it at that. And be silent on the more deeply affordable income levels that we all expect from this project. And again, so the the exact affordability levels, well, the language describing the affordability. Were carefully worked out. If. Again, if NHA wants to revise that somehow to include in the permit, I think that's again perfectly appropriate, but it would be my. Recommendation that it shouldn't be controversial to include something. And I'll leave that open ended in the decision to flag for the permit holder and others who are reviewing the permit. That what NHA. Is doing here is constructing and operating a project that is. Contains affordability levels. Considerably more deeply affordable across the board than eight than up to eighty percent of AMI. And I don't know. I, you know, I don't know why it would be controversial to address that somehow. Again, I would. I would invite. Alternate ways of. But I think it's important to make that clear.
I mean, I thank you, Chris. And I remember at the planning board meetings, we had talked about this language. I mean, specifically, there are conversations. About this type of language going on, so presented as such, this is what the units are about. This is what the project's about. So I I think there was some mention about making it sound like that was never talked about. In fact, it was quite the opposite. It was very specifically talked about. And and the other thing I agree with Chris, I didn't see this as being cobbled cobbled together. So so I think it was very. It was very thoughtful thoughtful what they were looking for for the language as far as through this whole process coming from both both sides. And the conversation is from both sides. And the other thing is, I mean, I heard I heard that specifically mentioned that, well, okay, the the. Building permit is an issue. Okay, you're concerned about the building permit, but you're not concerned about the certificate of occupancy, for example. That there's no concern there. So I don't know if that decreases the level of protection here. I don't think it does. Maybe, Chris, you can. Address that after I finish. But I mean, I don't. I mean, this language that's being talked about here, I heard, I think Bobby said, or someone said specifics. This is, I don't see this as very specific at all, actually. I mean, it isn't very specific. It isn't. It isn't tying you down. I mean, it's tying you down enough. But it's not tying you down a lot. In some ways, I want to. I want more specifics here as far as what some of the numbers are. But I think it's. I think it's giving it. I think maybe giving enough that we know what the intent of this project is. Here's the intent. And if there's an issue with certificate of compliance, does that mean, I asked you this, Paul, but just to answer this question. You know, so the certificate of compliance is then issued is then that something could be registered with the deed. At that, can it be registered with the deed, the deed at that point? Of occupancy is just for that. Can what can when can be something when what can we have triggered in here where something is registered? The deed has a mark on it with this this restriction.
The affordable housing use restriction is recorded, so it will specify the.
Where is that language coming from?
It's part of our funding and the CPC would be a party to that document. It would sign the document and it would acknowledge. The restrictions that their funding is imposing as well as all the other restrictions.
So 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 getting back to what Chris was saying is that, I mean, not necessarily wedded to this exact language, but. I don't see a lot of change that would necessarily have to happen here to be to be to be perfectly acceptable. Certificate of occupancy. Is there, you know, is there an issue with that? There's no issue with that. I mean, I'm not sure what we're talking, you know, why there's still a big problem with, you know, changing to that unless someone here has a problem with that.
There's a difference between getting an apartment and the ones at the beginning of the process and the end of the process.
No, I understand that. But but the issue, the whole issue boils down to when this project is there built and people living in it, we want something and we want to make sure. The restrictions are memorialized in the deed essentially, and we want to make sure that it's more memorialized. We want to make sure the project. People are occupied with this restriction. That's what it's all about. We we want to. We want to make sure that people at town meeting. Heard what was heard was being talked about, heard was being talked about, and this is the type of language that was being talked about. So I think it's important to put something in this order, this order of conditions here, and as long as we're not doing anything to bind you. But we're being specific in what we are talking about and what our expectations are, then down the line, as this project is going for the funding, it sounds like. It sounds like maybe with a little bit of luck, the funding will require a lower, you know, maybe a lower amount. So it'll even more deeply affordable on the average or something like that. So if we can solve this with a certificate of occupancy. Is that would that be an appropriate way to go?
My thoughts now, after listening to all of this, and I hate to do it, Chris, but I'm going to disagree with you. So what else is new? First of all, my recollection is, I don't remember if this was at town meeting. It was probably a prior planning board meetings when we were discussing zoning. Was that there were representations that the project would have a deeply affordable component. And that that was defined as sixty percent. And that I believe it was represented that it was very possible that it would be less than sixty percent, but it would certainly be. They would have a an affordable level of sixty percent. But they requested that in the zoning, we limit it to eighty percent to to the regular affordable, and we agreed to do that. In the zoning. And as I said, I don't remember whether this came up at town meeting, but I all my best recollection is also. Is that residents of Linden Chambers were at those meetings and they were very concerned. About that because a lot of the residents. Cannot meet the eighty percent requirement, but they could meet the sixty percent requirement, and so they wanted it there. But that was the zoning issue. What's in front of us now. Is an application for a special permit, and this is where I'm going to disagree with Chris. Our job. On a on an application, I'm sorry, what's in front of us is an application for site plan review. It's not a special permit. It's an application for site plan review. And in the application for site plan review. Number one, there's no mention whatsoever until tonight. Of a deeply affordable housing restriction. Bob never asked for it. Bob never represented that that was part of the site plan review. And I think our job in issuing a special a site plan review special permit. Is to make sure that the project as presented to us, the physical project. As presented to us meets the zoning requirements. And meets whatever other reasonable restrictions. In light, which we've now had with our Dover amendment case, which has more defined what reasonable requirements can be. In our. Our conditions on the site plan review special permit. So I'm going to say. I'm not sure. I'm not clear that it's appropriate for us. To throw in at this stage into the site plan review special permit. A restriction about deeply affordable housing, and I hate the idea that it has been represented that there will be one. It was. It was after discussion about concerns of the current tenants to make sure that they could be able to live there after the project was built. But, you know, we've got. We've got a zoning bylaw that says eighty percent. And we've got an application for site plan review, and I'm reiterating, I'm summarizing again. An application for site plan review that does not talk about. Deeply affordable housing. And so I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us. To put that restriction in our conditions now.
My response to that.
If 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 they're agreeable to have something there. That says. Before the certificate of occupancy is issued, that would be great. That would solve our political problems. That would solve Chris's concerns. But I'm I'm leaning towards Bob that if if they can't even agree to that, it's an. It's an issue for the CPC, not for us.
Two two quick.
Obviously, I I think I more agree with Chris. I think this has been represented as a project of with deeper affordability along and we.
But at what stage? At what stage?
From the very beginning, I mean, this all the planning.
That's right. That's right. At the zoning, at the zoning article issue, and if that were a a legal concern, it should have been in the zoning.
Well, I think we were trying to be flexible in the zoning and I, well, it's it's.
Can I respond quickly?
Can I can I just speak before you do for a second though, Chris? So. A couple of things. One.
Let me. Adam, could I respond? Let me respond to Paul before we before we add more questions to the to the to the list. Three responses. One, the planning board routinely includes conditions in its permits, I believe, that says something along the lines of. The applicant shall comply with all other permitting requirements in town, regulatory obligations of the state, town, federal. And so you.
And that is in there, right?
Permits permits are there. But that but but. So this is effectively, to my mind, no different than that. What you're doing is you're including as a condition, you know, that the applicant. Comply at the appropriate time with a known obligation to another wing of town. So the condition we framed it.
Where I have a problem, Chris, because I asked you about whether whether there is something in. The CPC documents, which we have not seen, that makes this a requirement. I'm not hearing that there is. Right now, a legal requirement with another board that there be deeply affordable housing.
If they do not meet the affordable, if they do not provide a restriction as in to my mind. By the time they want CPC money, they're not going to get five million, five point five million dollars that was appropriated by town meeting. That was a.
Talking about that. We're talking about what what that restriction is going to say, and that's what their concern is.
I'm. I don't mean for condition three twelve to say precisely. What the restriction is going to read like. What I think condition three point one two should do. Is describe in general terms, the obligation of NHA to meet the more deeply affordable levels. That's what I attempted to do when I drafted three thirty, three twelve, three twelve. As I drafted, it was in no way intended to be. Precise language that's going to be. Used verbatim. Three years from now when we need to do the restriction. It was intended to describe generally the ballpark of numbers that we're talking about, which is. Most deeply affordable, some eighty percent, and an average of sixty.
So I'm asking whether that's in the CPC documents. Is it in the minutes of the CPC meetings?
I don't know.
We don't have any of this in front of us, Chris, and you're asking us to put it into our document.
I am.
This is what has been a requirement of the CPC.
I am the town's lawyer and the planning board's lawyer, and I am informing you what the arrangement with the NHA is for the funding that was appropriated by town meeting.
Bob, is that your understanding? You represent the NHA.
I, I was not, I was not particularly involved with this issue. I, I think I, I, I mean, I, I agree with you, Paul. If what you have, what the board has in front of it is a site plan review application. And if you look at section 7.4 of the bylaws, it tells you that, you know, you, you have, you, you, you have, you have to comply with the specific requirements that are in the district, in the, in, in, in the district zoning. And it asks that you address things like, you know, traffic and drainage and, and safety and access and, and things like that. There's nothing in, in section 7.4 about affordability of housing units. And there's nothing in the zone, the specific zoning about affordability of the housing, the house, or the income, the income levels of the tenants that are going into these units, other than that it's that, that the tenants are going to be people with incomes that are at, at 80% of AMI or less. That's all. So that's, that's what, that's what the board has in front of it.
So I have a question.
I, I, I've, I've got one quick response, if I could. The, again, the question, so what I, what I have described to the planning board in the draft condition and in the conversation this evening is the negotiated arrangement between the town and NHA. The question becomes, at what point do we memorialize that? It's going to go in an affordability restriction later on down the road, but I see no harm and much good involved in noting this agreement now. There is no good that can come from omitting it entirely from a permit that's going to go on record. People, and, and frankly, the idea that NHA can't agree to any description whatsoever of this arrangement that would be satisfactory to it is, is, is a little concerning. Can do, this condition is intended primarily, although not exclusively, to be informational, to note that there will be a restriction that goes on record at some point down the road, so everybody dealing with this property understands that that is true and will be expected of them if they come into this leasing management, whatever of this property. And to end, to, to note for anybody interested in this permit, the affordability levels are something other than up to 80% of AMI. Now, I have to apologize to the board. I was not scheduled to appear tonight and I noted to Lee that I have a separate obligation that I need to depart for literally momentarily. My suggestion would be, I can work on a condition. I'm happy to review any revisions that Bob wants to suggest, but the idea that NHA cannot have this permit mention the affordability commitment of the housing authority at all, period, end of story, is, is a little concerning.
I'm sure, could I have, could I have two minutes with my clients outside?
Sure. I think Chris needs to leave.
He's got another obligation.
I gotta go.
Do you believe immediately, Chris, or can I ask you a question?
Try, go.
So can we, is it possible to, to require as a condition that they enter into an agreement with another town body at a, at a certain threshold?
The condition, as I drafted it, says that they're going to enter into an agreement with the select board prior to issuance of a building permit.
Yeah, I thought that's what it said.
Well, we're talking about a grant agreement, which is different.
The grant agreement is less important than the affordability restriction. There, there. It is, it is the affordability restriction that I think is the most important. And also, and also.
I understand that, but mechanically, so you're satisfied mechanically? We can have a condition that, that can be satisfied by a different town body, correct?
As I drafted the condition, it stated that NHA was going to enter into an affordability restriction with the, so with the, I can't remember if I said select board. That would be the.
Is it held by the town?
Held by the town. So that's not something the planning board's doing.
May I make a suggestion? Because again, I'm having a problem with your asking us to impose a restriction that's based upon an agreement with a different board of the town where we have not seen that agreement. So, and I know you've given us, you've given us your word that that agreement was entered into, but.
No, he hasn't.
No, he says that they.
Yes.
No, he said that it's the law agreement.
Yes, he has. I know, but he said that there is, that there has been an agreement that was.
Adam, you need to hold on a second.
In, in section 3.34, which says, in addition to the provisions of this approval, the petitioner must comply with all requirements of, and I would add here, and agreements with all state, federal and local boards, commissions or other agencies, including but not limited to the Board of Selectment, et cetera. And I would add the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes.
So that says that we have something here in general terms, that we have in here a condition that they agree with agreements with the select board. We should change Board of Selectmen to Select Board. And we're going to add Community Preservation Committee if that's where the agreement is.
Would you be okay with that?
Does that satisfy you, Chris?
There's, so my, my, my ask for this condition or a condition or really anything in the permit is twofold. One, require the provision of an affordable housing restriction at the appropriate time, whatever that might be. And two, to flag for others reviewing this permit down the road, that the affordability levels of this project are more deeply affordable than the maximum allowed by the bylaw. Because again, the, the project as was described to me and everybody who worked on this in advance of town meeting, is that this is not an 80% of AMI project. And I think it would be no issue for the applicant to agree to note that somehow in the permit itself. Less, somewhat, less.
So let's see what they have to say.
You know, I, I got Chris's email at 6:30 and I got to my office and I drafted something because I didn't know how this was going to go, quite frankly. So let me give you, let me give you this and I'll read it to you, Chris.
Do you want me to read it while you?
Well, yes. But I'm going to read it. I can, or you can.
Chris, Chris has to leave immediately.
I, well, I guess one of us should read it aloud.
You should read it. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, 3.1.2. A building permit may issue once the conditions of this decision have been satisfied. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, however, the Needham Housing Authority will cause to be recorded an affordable affordability housing restriction, which is generated with input from the Needham Community Preservation Committee regarding a 60% of AMI average income level, plus input from the various funding sources who may have their own affordable housing restriction language, which is intended to be perpetual.
Want it read again, Chris?
No, I got it. I, I was, I was perfectly content with the drafting. Up until the idea that we're going to, we, the town are going to be subject to restrictions required by, by others. I get, but I.
They may not need that, so which part is that?
Plus input from the various funding sources.
Plus input.
Affordable housing restriction language.
Yeah, that's, because, I mean, that's.
But I think we're close.
Right, that, I mean, that's, yeah, but that, but that's, that's the reality, Chris. We.
No, I, I think we're close.
I don't know what these other funding sources are going to say, but it, but it seems to me it's possible that they can, they could say, we don't like the language that the Community Preservation Committee is asking for. And, and then there'll be a, a discussion around the table or, or by, by Zoom or email or whatever, about exactly what language is going to go into this comprehensive affordable housing restriction. You indicated you wanted two, that you wanted two things.
No, Bob, I think, I think.
I, I think that, I think this gives them to you, Chris.
Here's what I would suggest. I think we're close, but I think this is sufficiently, and I, and I appreciate the, Bob, working with me on this. But I am going to be loath to agree to specific text while, you know, negotiating it over Zoom, while having to run with one foot out the door. How about, I ask that the planning board, if this is the last, you know, I to be dotted and or T to be crossed, the planning board, I would suggest can vote to approve the decision subject to.
Review of this particular.
Review by town council and Lee of this, this particular condition.
Okay.
Inconsistent with, consistent with the sort of alternative proposal that Bob just floated.
Okay.
May I just throw something out there that I'm thinking of? Instead of saying which is generated with input from the Needham Community Preservation Commission, I would say which is agreed to by the Needham Community Preservation Committee.
I like that better. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so what I'm understanding, what I'm understanding is.
Now I've got to run, but I think if, 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 again, if this is the last, the last detail, I, I'd suggest that I can be on the phone with Bob in the morning to, to work out the final language.
Are there any other items from the planning board that you're, you're questioning in the decision or is this the only one?
That's all I've got.
For, for the decision?
Yeah, I did, I, I did have one, one other, one.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yeah. I, I, I did have one other, one other clarification had to do with.
At 4.7.
In section 4.7, I, I, I don't think it'll be controversial for anyone. It was just a sort of a parenthetical.
The each for extension periods for up to two years.
Anyway. All right. I just, I just wanted to add the, add the words, each for extension periods of up to two years. We're talking about these, the, the two-year lapse issue and, you know, the, the language in 4.7 was, was not clear about how long such an extension might be. And so I, I just put in language saying, each for extension periods of up to two years. In other words, the housing authority comes to the planning board at that time and says, we need an extension, we'd like two years and here's why, and here's, here's what progress we've made and, and that the, that the board could then grant an extension of anything up to two years. So that's, that's all it does.
Is, I know that we discussed this last time. Is this what we agreed to, Lee? Just to.
Yes, this is, this is fine.
Okay. Does anyone have an objection to this?
No.
Adam and Artie? Okay. So I understand that now that 3.1.2 will be reviewed by Chris, that, hold on one second, Adam, let me just finish, please. 4.7, everyone is okay with that? And so now let's go through and see if anyone has. Adam, you said you had a couple of items.
Well, I'm, I'm 3.1, the one we were discussing before.
3.1.2?
Yeah. Which I never had an opportunity to raise before.
Okay, so what are your comments on 3.1.2?
So, so a couple of things. First of all, can you state again, let's see, the name of the document that you're going to record that relates to funding with those restrictions? What's that called?
Called the master affordable housing restriction.
The master affordable housing restriction. And that's recorded, not with a deed, but with?
It will be recorded with the, the, the notice of lease. So when we enter into the ground lease, it will be recorded with any mortgage that's associated with the debt.
Right.
And the master affordable housing restriction, as well as a tax credit regulatory agreement.
And?
All at, you know, as a simultaneous escrowed closing, so.
And it's an encumbrance.
Deed restriction on the real estate, not on the lessee.
Yes, right.
It's not on the lessee, it's on the, it runs with the property.
So that's pretty meaningful to me, the fact like the town wants a deed restriction.
Right.
The town will get a deed restriction.
Right.
And so, and I kind of agree fundamentally with what Paul was saying that, you know, that as a mechanical element, affordability restrictions are not, were not part of the application, have never been contemplated by it and are outside of the, are, are outside of the, the review criteria for a site plan review. Now, we're getting into a scenario where, where the applicant at the last minute is agreeing to work with us, which is, which is their prerogative, but it's not something that really, to Paul's point, is, is in my view and Paul's view, you know, kind of privy to the planning board at this point. Having said that, just to be clear, because I, remember I was the one that was actively working with Lee and the Needham Housing Authority, you know, leading the, leading the zoning change, that there, they, that there was, just to clarify a comment that Paul had made earlier, the, it was never intended to be, you know, an 80% AMI affordability. It was always intended to, because there may be residents that would be at 30% AMI, as an example, in order to make the funding work, they have to have, you know, certain, they need to have, you know, certain income in order to be able to secure funding and to have, you know, certain net operating income levels to be viable for funding in this world.
So how does that change 3.1.2 from what we just discussed?
So I've just, so I wanted to, so I wanted to clarify a couple of points that were brought up for the record on the background to this and the context. So thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I'm just trying to figure out how it relates to this part beyond what we already discussed.
So in, so in other words, just to complete the thought, is that, that we wanted the ability, they wanted the ability and we supported it, to be able to have a certain number of units to be 80% at 80% AMI in order to be able to qualify for funding, which was not intended to be a full 80% project, but to have some flexibility with that. Here, I, I think that it's ultimately satisfied because there is another, there is another instrument that oblig, that demonstrates the obligation and binds the town to its goal of deeply affordable restrictions that at that time will specify what the actual affordability requirements are, right? Like this doesn't. And having something vague for the funders, like I understand, I appreciate what Chris was trying to accomplish, Lee, that he wanted to have, you know, keep it vague so it was theoretically easy and not as onerous. But on the other hand, when they're dealing with their funders and their, and the funders look at this and say, quote, deeply affordable, it doesn't provide any specifics to what that actually means.
Well, it says the average is 60% when you take everything as a whole. So to that, to that case, it is specific.
I'm just trying to figure out, Adam, where you're going, because we've been talking about this for an hour and that's what Chris was explaining. So what, what, what additional information do you have? That you, what, what are you trying to say? That you don't agree that we should do this or that we should?
I, I, I think they're, you know, they're, they're, they're offering, you know, to do this. I think that at that point we can, but I don't think that it's actually necessary because we're achieving the goal with, with another instrument that's going to be obligated to the property, to the real estate, which is what the town's goal is.
Right.
So I think that's pretty meaningful.
And I, and I, I appreciate it all, but I think throughout the conversation, what I understood was that Chris felt comfortable that we did need to. comfortable that we did need to do this and Lee feels comfortable that we need to do this.
I'm not sure. I'm I'm not clear from that conversation at all that Chris understood.
I'm clear that Chris understood it.
Until now, that there was a deed restriction recorded with the property that that binds the town.
Yes, I think he understood that. He just wanted to call this. He wanted to call the agreement out at this at this stage because that's going to happen subsequent.
I understand what you're saying, Lee, but how is that possible? When Betsy didn't mention it until this conversation tonight.
Didn't mention what?
This.
We all knew there was going to be a deed restriction put on this.
I I I understand that, but the 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 mechanism wasn't discussed.
We we'd always talked about. It was always this basic conversation was talked about numerous times.
I'm not I'm not denying that, Artie. I'm not commenting on that.
Okay.
I'm saying I'm not at all.
Can we back up? Hold on a minute. We have something here in Bob's draft of three point one two where the applicant is willing to agree to having something along the lines of this language in our site plan.
And town meeting agrees that a version of this would work for the town with some some rewording. So.
So.
So I think we're okay.
Yeah, and the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant has also said that a certificate of occupancy would be perfectly acceptable. So so I mean, I understand Chris's, you know, this is a this isn't just an additional guardrail. It may not be needed. But it's, you know, I think even Bob has said, you know, for the politics of it, to the visuals of it, that it it makes sense to put something in there. It may not be necessary, perhaps it isn't. But we're putting something in there to memorialize something in our language now, because this was talked about at the meetings. The applicants are perfectly acceptable having a certificate of occupancy, be connected with all this going on, with everything that's going on in this very short paragraph, which is what was talked about at the meetings. So since they're amenable to that, and I understand it, I understand Paul's point, I get it. But it seems like when they're amenable to something.
Agreement.
Yeah, but why does the why are we still, I, you know, precedent? Sure, precedent of what we're putting in cycle, sure. But we we have, we put things in there all the time for certain, you know.
Doesn't make it right, does it?
We certainly we put things out in there all the time that go that push that that go into the gray area. This is always a gray area.
Right, so what I just want to.
But I understand your concern, but what's the issue?
And I appreciate your concern, Adam. It's not that I don't appreciate, but I felt like we've been talking about it for now. We've come to an agreement, but I feel we're going to move forward with unless the board feels like we want to rescind it, but I don't think so. I think it's something that we've already. Okay, and and did you have?
I I just to a point that I had made before, I would like to add in three point three four. I would like to add the community preservation committee. The list of boards.
Three point one four or three?
Three point three four.
Yeah, three point three four that says that the petitioner must comply with all requirements of all other.
Yeah, select board and committee.
And then we have including but not limited to.
Actually, three point thirty four.
I'm sorry, right, three point thirty four.
In addition to the provisions that are acceptable, the petitioner must comply with all requirements of all state, federal and local boards, commissions and other agencies, including but not limited to the board of selectmen, it should obey the select board.
Yeah, I've got that.
The building commissioner, fire department, department of public works, conservation commission, police department and board of health, and we're adding.
And we're adding and and the community preservation.
Okay. Any other comments, Adam? Did you have any other?
No.
Artie?
No.
Paul?
Good.
I'm good also. So is there a motion?
So I add that we first thing we have to do is this page. So I move that the board grant the requested major project site plan review special permit under section seven point four of the Needham zoning bylaw for major project site plan special permit number two thousand twenty two dash oh one. Subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the decision.
Do we have to say something about the group point?
Yeah, we have to say something.
No, that's that's the wording of the decision. That's that's the second option is when we approve the decision.
Okay.
This is just great. This is just granting the relief.
That's the first part. Okay, so motion made by Paul, second by Adam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Excellent.
So just to be clear, Justin's not participating in this. No, it's four to nothing. So the 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 vote is four to nothing.
Yeah. So it's unanimous. So.
I was wondering about that. Now I understand why it was four and seven five.
Okay, so this second motion.
So now I move that we we approve and issue the decision as presented in the that we approve the decision as presented in our packet with the change discussed tonight at section three point three thirty four. And that and and that section three point one point two we approve it with the provision that section three point one point two be amended in a manner that is agreeable to the petitioner and town council.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Paul, seconded by Adam.
And also and also the change of four point seven.
Right, and the change of four point seven.
Four point seven, correct.
Actually, I think just just to cover everything, I think also three point one makes reference to three point one point two.
Yeah.
Okay. So any questions, comments? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
No.
Did you say aye?
I did.
Okay. So it's unanimous also. Sorry. Okay, so that that closes the decision. And so, Lee, you're all set for right now?
Yes. Yeah, why don't you do that at the house?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Yes.
Can I say on behalf of the Needham community, thank you very, very much for the decision tonight. And to everybody, a small army of other boards and committee members over the last, it's been exactly two years. And we will do our best to exceed everybody's expectations from this point of point. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You put a lot of work into this, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you.
People in Needham and.
Into the community.
Best of luck, best of luck.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so thank you. So the second item today is the review of planning board goals and Alex had had sent those out last week and there's an also in the packet, there were some notes as well. Let me just pull this up. So let me just sign this. Can I borrow your pen? I have pink and I don't. Okay, so I have here planning board goals beginning of fall twenty twenty four. Number one is large house review committee. The second one, if no referendum, design guidelines for MBTA community zoning. Number three, if we receive the grant, the parking study, and number four, the accessory dwelling units per state law. So that.
Those are the changes that we're going to have to make to our accessory zoning bylaw to comply with the new state law.
Right.
Right. Another item was we were going to look at a couple of other if if no referendum. We were going to look at Crescent Street and at Hersi and another piece that we had mentioned.
Right. One of the other home recommendations.
Yeah, I guess maybe the the gem, the home recommendations.
Which which Hersi was one.
Right.
I think the bigger impact is to is to focus on.
And this town center.
From in particular, Great Plains.
Yeah.
From, I can't remember the address. We can look it up on Google Map.
Yeah, yeah.
Post office.
Yep.
To Warren Street.
Yep.
That's, you know, I think and I would not do all of those all at once. I think I would accomplish, I would recommend. But at separate times too, like that's going to that's going to be the one that would turn sooner rather than later and have a greater impact for the town than Hersi would. And a later town meeting we can deal with.
Well, we can prioritize them. But we had told the Crescent Street, because that was a pretty critical one also. So I think that that the home recommendations would be number five, and that's all contingent of the if there's a referendum or no referendum.
Well, I think we should maybe this is the unlocking the Charles part, but I think we should look at the Udoit area. Staples slash that that area down there is, I mean, that's if we can if we can find some way to, if there's any zoning change.
Is that within half a mile?
No, no, it's nothing to do with the MBTA community.
Well, that's what we're talking about here.
That's not a home recommendation. That would be a separate recommendation here. There. So there's other items here. Technical changes to bylaw, customary home occupation.
What does that mean?
I don't know. What does that mean?
That is, I forget if it started with Dave or Joe, to be honest with you, but did it? So it was the bylaw allows for accessory home occupations in homes.
Yeah.
And it's just kind of outdated. I think it might refer to like radio fixing and just stuff that isn't. That has evolved, and I think that the building commissioner wanted some more guidance on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Accessory.
Uses.
Occupation uses.
Okay. Short term rentals. Eight eighty eight Great Plain Avenue.
What's going on with eight eighty eight Great Plain Avenue? We haven't heard anything. So was that really something to have on our list?
Well, that's just that's just going to be based on the whole we zoning of Great Plain Avenue area.
That's why I think so. We know that the property owner, you know, they've come to us with a specific concept in mind. They have other uses that are lawful, and I think there's, you know, that they could that they could pursue. But I think that as a priority, I again, I strongly recommend that we deal with that first before we deal with Hersi. And frankly, Crescent, like Crescent we're talking about, you know, really, it's it's really for for Wolfson.
Right, but that's the home, but that's the home recommendation for all of Great Plain Avenue, not just eight eighty eight. Eight eighty eight is a separate issue.
So eight eighty eight would be included as a part of that.
Correct, but that's a home recommendation, yeah.
But there's still the developer, the property owner might still be coming back to us about the project that they want to do, which is which is which may very well, I think what they presented to us the first time doesn't meet the requirements of of the neighborhood.
But I think that I so separate front, so not as a function, because this is outside of MBTA compliance.
Yeah.
If, for instance, we would agree to, you know, something in the neighborhood of, you know, bank, was it like fifty units an acre somewhere on that scale with an allowance for smaller lots, which is what we have in that area as well. You know, I think at three stories or three, three plus a fourth that's setback and that was consistent on the north side and the south side of Great Plain from Pickering to that from Warren to that other to the post office address area. That would that would encompass that project, and it would provide, you know, you know, effectively the relief that they're looking for.
Yeah, but you're getting specifics. I mean, we already we already we already know we have to look at the center town. We have to and we have to look at Great Plain Avenue. And so I mean, we have to, we have to look at that.
So why don't we do it in steps? If first is the referendum, do is there a referendum? Because if there's a referendum, then we have to focus.
But the referendum has nothing to do with.
With home recommendations?
Has nothing to do with, we always knew because home recommended it, right? That and and you were clear about that. But it was outside of MBTA compliance. So with that foundation, we can do the work outside regardless of the referendum.
I understand, but I think I think we have a couple of things that take priority to that, and one of the things is if there's no referendum, the design guidelines we have to do first. So I'm just trying to figure out. I think we need to talk about what the home recommendations are and which ones we want to pursue with or without the referendum, right?
I think we I think we were talking about just doing this as a preliminary meeting and then.
Yeah, this is just big picture, just to say there are home recommendations.
Make sure we had a list that was going that was complete.
Well, why is it on our list if the property owner for eight eighty eight isn't coming back to us?
I didn't, I it's on it's on my list.
I think we wanted to look at it. We wanted to look at it.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
I always so I always wanted, I didn't want to look at it in isolation. I wanted to look at.
The whole area. Right, correct, correct. Yeah, I'm totally with you. I'm just saying, I think we're trying to prioritize what can be done, and it's based on different things that are happening.
Right, and it's under on.
But we don't have your five is home recommendations, and then there are like A, B, C, D, E, and then we prioritize those in the next meeting.
So I think.
Once we understand what what the other priorities are, right?
So we're going to know if I'm out once we get through whatever's going on.
Right, so Great Plain Avenue outside of home
Yeah.
is under other items.
And we're and we're going to and we're going to and we're going to know.
Not for the fall, it's not for right now.
That Great Plain Avenue is a home recommendation.
It is.
Right, so.
Great Plain Avenue as a home recommendation is under beginning fall twenty twenty four. Great Plain Avenue outside of home recommendation is under other items.
I think beginning fall twenty twenty four, we were we were just trying to identify the four things we knew were coming up. I mean, we we have to prioritize how these projects are going to be done because they're not all going to be done at the same time.
And and how we prioritize them is going to be connected with what's happened with the 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 town and how they're feeling, what's happening with the referendum, how they're going to be feeling about additional zoning going on with additional housing and where we then where we then look at that additional housing. I agree with the center town. We need to, we need, at some point, it needs to be in there. But but we also do need to look at, for example, you know, getting back to the Charles River area and Udoit. Because that's a that's an area, that's a, I guess I'd say that's a lower impact area with people's objections.
Right, but let's, why don't we make a long list and then we start prioritizing and then within what we think is achievable for this year versus what's achievable for next year? Right?
Yeah.
So let's just go. So what's unlocking the Charles? I don't know what that means.
That's changing the zoning down there. Udoit.
That's the unlocking the Charles, okay.
To allow for
Okay, okay.
Small lots.
No, 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 I understand.
Or.
So that's.
I didn't know that had a catchy name.
Push for push for purposes.
I like it. I like it.
No, that's the the the.
You do it and unlocking.
So that's mixed use one twenty eight.
College kids came up with unlocking the Charles.
Okay, mixed use one twenty eight and Highland Commercial.
Inclusionary zoning. And.
What's inclusionary zoning?
It's making a town requirement for a minimum of.
Just to be just to a generalized inclusionary zoning bylaw and put all the inclusionary zoning under one set of provisions. And so it's consistent across all districts and all districts are covered.
Which hasn't afforded, which is a.
Which is basically the twelve and a half percent.
Yeah.
Requirement.
So that there's that. And then there's also here, we had DEI adding some information into applications if we wanted to have requirements for and then there's another question here about climate. Are there other things that we want to include with climate? Are any sustainability goals, right? I know we can't do everything, but I'm we have to prioritize it, but at least if we put it on here. And then I would like to recommend, we just did the bylaws for for the home for MBTA communities that are specific for a state mandate. Would we consider also doing bylaws for Dover amendment so that it's clear?
That's what I have on my list.
So that it's clear, like we we could use the same ones practically.
Specific site plan review bylaws for Dover amendment projects.
Which will probably be pretty similar to MBTA communities, to tell you the truth, with maybe some slight changes. But that would be something that I think would be important to do so that.
One of the things that I thought of as I wrote down, specific site plan review for Dover amendment projects is whether because the Dover amendment has separate paragraphs for separate types of
Right.
projects and they're worded kind of differently in some of the land court cases that we were looking at. We're saying that, well, when you have it for churches, it doesn't really apply to or it applies differently for childcare centers, which is a separate paragraph. We may have to have actually a separate provision for 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 churches and schools, which is in one paragraph. And a separate provision for childcare centers, which is a separate paragraph. And then we got to look at the other paragraphs to see if there's stuff there that we need to have.
I think you're setting yourself up to lead this.
I'm not going to be on the board.
Well, that's why we have to do it. That's priority one.
Pick up the pace there, Paul. Pick up the pace.
Program, Paul, so we can. No, I think it's.
You're behind before you even started.
Yeah, the other the other piece is is understanding, you know, specifically in the in sixteen eighty eight where the setback was thirty five feet, but all of the houses, even though the setback is that all the houses are way back, you know, or sixty five feet or whatever it is.
Yeah.
So understanding if there are any other conditions that we might want to change this to say if it. this to say, if it's not resident, you know, because you can add it to the zoning, right, and say for non-residential, it should be this number.
Non-residential property, residential property.
So that then it makes it easier for us to review things. He was blocking it.
Slide, slide that way out.
Okay, so this is the first pass, it seems like we have a long list, but let's, let's start, I'll help refine it based on it, Adam, your, what you started with is really great. It's excellent, yeah, so, so let's start putting it together, figuring out what the priorities are, I guess.
The other thing is I know this is not, well, one of, one of the things we talked about doing was training, which we never got to, I know that was sure high priority, so if there, if, think about what kind of training you would find helpful.
Well, we went through, like I created those modules, so, you know, subdivision control law is one, site plan, site plan review, special permit, and then if we follow our kind of code of conduct, we already have that, which is good.
Okay.
And there were some other ones which I had sent to you.
That'll be great.
You know, the right, four main modules, in fact, may I see this, please? Is there another page to this?
No.
I didn't, yeah, there were four, there were four main modules.
Subdivision Charles, site plan review, special permit.
I can't remember offhand what the fourth one was, but there was a fourth one.
Okay, well, send, if you find it, send me an email.
Okay.
Yeah, and these are just as module one, two, three, four, doesn't say specifics. Okay, so.
Oh, I, I, like, in our decisions, and, you know, what the scope of our authority is, but I think that is best broken out into each of those modules.
Yes, because you're doing a different kind of approval.
Right, okay, so let's start, we're gonna start refining this and then figure out, I guess one question is this, the referendum, if there's a referendum, we would not be working on the design guidelines, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think it's really, it's gonna affect how that's done, I mean, if, if that, if there were a referendum and if, for example, the neighborhood plan went away and we're just down to the base zoning, then it's a different protocol.
Don't we still want design standards in general, because you can get them by special permit?
Well, you have them already embedded, though, you have them already embedded in the Chestnut Street district.
But not in the other areas, if it's a, the base plan, you'd have them in business.
You're still gonna need them.
Yeah, so I don't think, I think we still want to work on them.
I think it's a question.
We have to see what happens.
We have to see what happens so we know what we're doing, which projects.
Because that's gonna inform the scope of the design review.
It would, yeah, it would, you know, it would find the scope of what we're developing design guidelines for, is it for the neighborhood plan or is it for the base plan, which are two different sets of zoning parameters.
Okay.
So.
And, and Chris said that we would probably hear on this referendum when I spoke to him.
Oh, yeah, so I just, I guess Chris and, you did get the memorandum on, that he, that he distributed and, I mean, I think we're supposed to know by the fifteenth, I think is when the signatures are due.
That's what he said.
And depending upon what happens, I think the town, Kate Fitzpatrick and Chris and Katie are gonna do a presentation to the select board at their meeting, maybe on this twenty-second of November, and there'll be a packet for that with information, maybe if we, if we are gonna go forward with the referendum, what the timeline looks like, and that packet will get distributed to you so you can see the information they have, and then on the, at our meeting, which is the following Tuesday, they're gonna come in and present the information to inform you if we're looking at a referendum.
So will you let, when will we know, the fifteenth or the following Monday or whatever?
I think the signatures are due on the fifteenth, so I think we'll have an idea right around then, and when I know, I'll let you know.
I think the town, what Chris said is that the town clerk is trying to get some information, was trying to get some information on Friday because they have to review and make sure that they're all legit.
Valid signatures.
Or how many signatures they have so far, so.
Right, well, I, I, the only thing I know is that the deadline, I think, is the fifteenth of November.
No, he said that also, but, yeah.
And I don't think they've received anything yet.
I think I saw something probably in the Needham Observer that said that if they, if they submit the petition, we have to, we have to have the referendum on December tenth?
I think that those timelines are, are still being worked out.
That's awfully soon.
Yeah, sure is.
That information, I think, will come from the town manager and Chris in the meeting they're doing with the select board on the twenty-second and then they'll inform you the following at your meeting the following week.
And that's a Friday meeting, the twenty-second?
Uh, no, is it, did I write the wrong date down? It's the first meeting.
And everyone received Chris's letter, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the political activity and ballot questions, okay.
Yeah, the twenty-second is a Friday.
So let me get my calendar, I gave you that long date.
Entirely clear, I don't remember what the distinction is, like, there are certain things that we could do and certain things we couldn't do.
Right.
We couldn't.
I'll tell you what we can't do, we can't sign a communication.
Uh, so no, I think they're going to the select board meeting on the twelfth and they're coming to us on the nineteenth.
So I just want to go through what we can't do, we can't sign a communication advocating in support of or in opposition to a ballot question on behalf of the planning board.
Oh, but we can't individually.
Unless the issuance of such statements is permitted as outlined above, right, so the planning board may not do any of the following, we cannot use public resources to distribute communications for purposes of advocacy, this would include a mass mailing, placing an advertisement, distributing to voters directly or indirectly, as an individual planning board member, we cannot use public resources to send communication, this includes any needumma.gov email address to send our communications, we cannot solicit a vote on a ballot question directly or indirectly, where such a solicitation is inherently coercive, and it's that, a solicitation is inherently coercive if it is directed by a public employee at their subordinate, person's doing business with or having a matter pending before their public agency or anyone subject to their agency's authority.
So, so if they're, if they're at a Roach Brothers, you know, they're trying to get signatures and I go in to get chicken for dinner, I can engage them in conversation and say that I oppose what they're doing.
Absolutely.
Yes, you just can't send communication coming from, you know, the planning board.
So each of us could email individually from our own individual email accounts.
Correct.
Correct.
To town meeting members and to the residents overall to discourage people signing a petition.
Right.
Well, you read something in there about coercive.
You can't, you can't solicit a vote on a ballot question directly or indirectly where such a solicitation is inherently coercive, like you're, because they have, maybe they, they're, like, Bob Smart, let's say.
But you're saying as a planning board member.
As a plan, as an individual planning board. No, as an individual planning board member.
But I believe he then says that the definition of coercion depends upon who you're soliciting and there's a list of people that you can't solicit because that would be coercion.
Right.
So you can solicit anybody that's, you know, in front of, in front of Sudbury Farms collecting petitions, just a citizen of the town.
But not someone who's doing business with the planning board.
But, you know, you can't solicit.
Bob Smart.
You know, somebody who's an employee of, you know, okay, a perfect example, Alyssa is a Needham resident and is an employee of the planning department, you can't solicit.
There's a conflict of interest there.
Yeah, there's a conflict of interest there, you know, I read this and I said, everything here is common sense.
Right, but they want to make sure, yeah.
I read it and I said, I've just stayed away from everything.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I've just stayed away.
I was out for.
Okay.
I was out getting some exercise the other day and one of my neighbors came running up to me and said, what's going on with this? And I found that he had misinformation, lack of information, and I set him straight on what the process was, what he had done.
Had he already signed the petition?
I don't think so.
Because it's, a number of people that I've spoken to signed it without realizing the impact and having very little information and then feeling duped afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, so.
But I did not.
Let's move on.
In any way encourage him to sign or not sign.
No, I understand, although we're allowed to do that.
I was very careful to.
But we can do that.
But you could have, because.
I probably could have, but I didn't want to go there.
Yeah, yeah, I don't blame you, okay, so, moving on to the vote on the large house review committee appointments from town boards, committees, this does not include at-large positions which have not been filled yet.
I'm still waiting on one board, I thought it was gonna have that, so we're gonna vote that at the next meeting.
Okay, so that at the next meeting. Meeting minutes, we have meeting minutes from September seventeenth, I believe. Does anyone, or September, yes, does anyone, this was about the.
MBTA.
The MBTA, right. So any questions on these meeting notes? Or comments?
I move.
There actually is one typo, your name, Paul, was spelled incorrectly, where is that?
So what else is new?
It says Mr. Alert noted he was. Mr. Alert. Mr. Alert.
Hey, you're shocked that you can have Mr. Wonderful, the planning board can have Mr. Alert.
Top of page two, top of page two, Mr. Alert. Well, you know, you know, you are alert sometimes, not all the time, Paul, not all the time.
Do people read Albert, do people read Albert at all?
All the time.
Mr. Albert.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the minutes of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four per our packet tonight with the amendment on page two to correct the spelling for Mr.
Alert. Is there a second? Okay, so.
Paul, I don't know if you can second.
So the motion was made by Adam, seconded by Mr. Alert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's the meeting minutes, planning board appointments to the tree preservation and planning committee.
I nominate Artie Crocker.
Yeah, I'd love to do that.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, I mean, on the, I mean, on the Climate Action Committee, I actually, I actually intentionally didn't take that position for the tree position because I knew I'd take it from, probably take it from here, so.
Okay, so then, so.
And just to be clear, Artie, you're okay with doing the large house and the trees?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Oh, yeah, no, they're.
That's awesome.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, excellent, do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for Artie to be?
So, so moved.
Okay, moves, okay, and?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Paul, move, motion by Paul, seconded by Adam, all in favor, say aye? Okay, so unanimous, Artie will be doing that and then report for planning director and board members.
I prepared the department budget, which I submitted to the town manager, I'll share a draft of that with you for the, in the packet for the next meeting, I again asked for additional planner for the department, I did meet with the town manager this past week to go over the budget, she understands the need for a planner, she agrees with the need.
Who's this?
Uh, Kate, she agrees with the need for the planner, you know, I'm not guaranteed I'm gonna get it because, you know, I'm not sure if they're gonna find any, any additional positions.
Is this full or part?
But there is certainly a recognition of the fact that it's a need that needs to be filled.
Is it full or part, Lee, and what, what type of money we're talking about?
Yeah.
It was for a full-time planner and I think I asked for eighty-five thousand for the position.
So could, could there be a grant or something that you could do to have a consultant planner, like somebody who does consulting and not necessarily be on the payroll?
Well, I'm.
For a specific project, could you do a project base?
That's what I did for the parking study.
Because that's what I think, if, if you know that there's no way of doing it and there's some things that we really need to get done.
The parking study was what I did, the grant for.
Right, so, but I just, I think that's probably your best bet, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
Just to think about which projects you would need additional help on.
Well, if there's a grant out there that goes along with the project we're working on, right?
I think that's what I would do, is focus on that, because I think it's gonna be hard to come by, just, okay, any other, any other comments? Okay, and then correspondence, I mentioned the correspondence from the group from Linden Street, beyond that, I didn't see any other correspondence.
No, there wasn't.
I think we got so much for so long, that people are tired of sending it.
Question on the correspondence from Linden.
So.
Since, since, so since we officially closed the hearing, where did that, where does that correspondence lie?
I'll, I'll, I'll put it in the file, but it wasn't considered for the hearing, because what, you know, what comes in after the hearing?
And I do want to say for the record.
This is for Artie's, oh, this is, oh, Ron, Ruth, did we vote that one, I'm sorry, I forgot about this other committee to vote. Actually, could we vote, I think you had asked me to, I mentioned this general bylaw committee.
Yeah, we said Ron Ruth would be great for it.
I reached out to Ron, he's willing to do it.
Okay.